Hey guys, ready? Yep, thank you. Uh, let's stand and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Let's pray. Lord, we pray that you give us the courage to step out of our comfort zones and try new things. May your creativity ignite a fire within us to pursue excellence and make a positive impact. In Jesus' holy name, amen. Give just a brief moment for your own intentions. Uh, motion to approve the agenda. Or discussion on the agenda. Anything change, change. Approve then. Okay? Now, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with item G moved after exact?
So moved.
I need a second. Need a second.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to approve the agenda with all items of G moved after exact. Any discussion to that motion? Hang on, all in the favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Opportunity for public comments, anyone from the public wish to speak to the commission?
Uh, Larry Newman from Blackhawk. I just want to comment that I'm disappointed in the legislature again for failing to reform and fix property taxes. They just kicked it down the road again. And opened the door for automatic three percent increases in taxes until hell freezes over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Not seeing anyone else wishing to speak, it brings us to equalization.
Good morning Commissioners, Reeu Crane, Director of Equalization. Assessment notices have been received. Last few days have been very busy in the Equalization Office, lots of people coming in questioning assessments. Uh, we do have local boards of equalization next Monday. Um, at present, I know we have appeals in Sturgis and Somerset. And haven't really heard from the townships, I don't know what's going on on that, on that forefront. Um, Board Jennifer had her first experience with creating all the board packets and delivering them to all the appropriate people.
Yes, the townships have till when to submit?
The deadline is Thursday. Yep, this, this Thursday.
How many people, um, down set you?
I know of only one in Somerset, but there has been more conversation, we expect that there may be a couple more. Um, Sturgis, there was one recommendation as of yesterday, but again, appeal forms have been handed out, so we're expecting that there may be a few more.
Oh, but so far it's just one in each.
Yes. We're expecting more. Unless we can, you know, go do sort, do our inspections and see if there's something that we have done, you know, some, something that we can, that we need to make an adjustment for. Um, so much legislation this year, holy buckets, it's been, it's been a lot to keep up with. On the auditor forefront, on the equalization forefront, taxation is huge.
And, yeah, it's, the amendment's solemn, but they changed it.
Yes.
Been a hoot.
And again, I've asked you this privately. Have you had any legislator call you as Director of Equalization and ask how any of the proposed bills would impact Mead County?
I have not.
No. Interesting. Typical.
Uh, I know that Talbot is gone the middle of April, towards the end. Uh, I can't say how many days we will need for Board of Equalization right now, but keep in mind that we may need more than April eighth afternoon. Um, if so, we'll have to get together with the rest of, with everybody and figure out what schedule might work.
Anything else, Ms. Crane? Anybody have anything else for, for Reeu? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, let's go to facilities.
Good morning Commission, Ben Petracco, Mead County Facilities Director. Um, just gonna give you a short report on some of our February workload. I don't have a whole lot of major, um, things to talk about, we had forty-two work orders submitted in February. Um, of those, it was mostly more of the same typical plumbing, HVAC, uh, mall equipment and electrical issues with quite a few sheriff vehicles. We were able to complete our annual fire alarm inspections on the, on the notification, um, pieces for the whole entire campus. Some of our larger projects included, we had a, another heat pump failure in the jail for one of the pods. And we were able to replace that unit completely with a, one of the newer style ones that uses the new refrigerant. So, uh, kind of one at a time, we've been picking those off as they go down, so.
Hopefully they keep spaced out.
Yeah, yeah, well, they, they're gonna have to be because they're not cheap, you know, as they, we can get two or three a year, that's, that's good though.
So are you talking about the ones that do, of heat?
Right.
Yeah.
Which brand did you buy?
These ones are, the, so the old ones are Florida heat pump and that manufacturer is now sold to, uh, I can't even think of the name of the company, but it's, it's the same type of product, it's just under new ownership. They use the new four-ten refrigerant instead of the R twenty-two though, so they're supposed to be a little more efficient power-wise. But it's kind of the same, pretty much just newer version. We also had a compressor failure in our geothermal loop for our maintenance shop, um, in-floor heating system. So that was kind of a project, getting that replaced, we were able to buy a compressor for it, get it changed out and got that working again, so we're not burning so much propane out there. Uh, kind of on the highway department side of things, we had a request to update several of the remote shop gas furnaces, um, with programmable thermostats. To help with the warm-up of the equipment before the employees show up in the morning. Cause they were having to wait during those really cold days, I guess. Project, I've been working with the contractor from Rasmussen to try to get some of the pre-work done, some of the pre-work done before the actual tower shows up. There's some piping that they gotta redo and stuff like that, so if we can get, hopefully this week, they're supposed to show up to, to tear into that and get some of that replaced so that we can minimize the downtime when we do the project because shorter we can keep that thing down, the better, because we lose air conditioning. Even, uh, this early in the year, we're using quite a bit of air conditioning inside the jail area to keep, you know, it's just the amount of bodies in there and stuff, so. Definitely gonna have to, uh, try to fast-track that thing when it's here. Uh, that's kind of all I have on my report for February.
Thanks Ben, any questions for Ben?
Now, as the only female commissioner here, all I have to say is how lucky Ben's wife is that somebody who's so competent. Who can fix all those things.
She's looking at me, so she must be referring to me that I am.
Well, I appreciate that, I'll be sure and tell her you said that.
As my wife called you, so you could come over sometime then. Weekend, you got time, don't you? Yeah, any other questions for Mr. Petracco?
Thanks.
Thanks Ben. Uh, let's move on to, uh, the IT department.
Then I'll call Lori.
See how the end of this, most different day. They're all in trouble where it's going.
Morning Commissioners, uh, Tony Cummins, Mead County IT. Now, the free employees now, I just remembered, just remembered.
Are, are they all sitting up here?
No, no. So that's been, uh, it's been received really well from the employees, you know, they take a lot of, uh, good information out of that training and they're able to use that at work and obviously outside of, uh, the county. Um, we're currently setting up, we've got our hands on finally the, uh, ICOM Wi-Fi radios for the jails correctional officers, uh, Caleb, jail administrator, um, got those purchased and ordered way back, well, October sometime, so we got hands on them, yes, they finally was back ordered from some hardware issues. So we're currently stepping on a couple of bugs for that, make sure that we are able to, uh, roam wirelessly without issue across the buildings for the correctional officers, so. Uh, that's, uh, almost there. Uh, we got delivery of all our tough bucks for the Sheriff's Department yesterday, so Clayton is currently working on setting those guys up. That will bring us into, um, uh, fully, fully, uh, hardware replaced for Windows ten, so we're gonna be full Windows eleven compliant. So, uh, you know. And, um, all other departments aside from obviously the tough bucks have been deployed and we're all up to speed on those guys, so all current and patched and all good to go there. That's about all I have to report.
James Johns was able to cover down for me, fortunately. Um, the one in Faith was a single resident house. Unfortunately, it was a total loss and Red Cross, I'd reached out to them and they, uh, to find out the aftermath and they said unfortunately it was a total loss and they took care of the, uh, resident. Um, and then, uh, Blackhawk had another house fire with three occupants and it was also unfortunately a total loss.
They ever determined, I mean, that house just disintegrated. Did, did they ever determine the cause?
I, I couldn't tell you, I'm not sure.
Disappeared.
I can ask and find out for you if you want.
I'm, I'm just curious, I, I mean.
I never get to find out, there's always assumptions, but.
Gone. In a matter of
I'll see if I can find out. I should be able to find out from Blackhawk, I'm pretty sure. I would, I would imagine, right? Um, any questions about those two fires?
Oh, the fire yesterday, was that not in Mead County?
Fire?
Fire east.
Oh, Cheyenne, it's on the rez.
Was it just across the river then? Yeah, Faith was called out. I believe Ening might have been as well.
I, I'm not aware of this at all.
It's in Zebok County.
Oh, that's probably why.
Well, yeah, but it was fairly close.
It, it.
I got pictures out of Mead County. Yeah.
Yeah.
It was Tiquini. That's, that's, that's a reservation school. I don't know if there's that school or not.
It's, yeah, well, they evacuated the school and you could see from, from the, uh, photos I posted, it, it was right down there in that community, right when you go down the Cheyenne River.
Right across the river.
Yeah, but it's, it's almost impossible to find any updates because o- other than the latest I could find this morning was Lucky Loose Stay Off The Roads.
The Tiquini. And, um, well, it was on news last night, the grass fire, grass fire, the, it was a grass fire as well. Yeah.
Yeah, and they evacuated the schools and.
I understand it was over the river, but dust kind of, yeah.
I know they'll reach out to me if there's mutual aid requests, which we've talked about before and stuff, but I wasn't.
Well, and the Sturgis Fire Department made sandwiches and stuff that they sent up there and that's
That's.
That's extent of my knowledge of it.
Mine is just the page, Faith and Ening both was called out.
You can see some of the fire if you go on to my page.
Okay, yeah, maybe I need to pay attention to Facebook and the news a little bit more. Um.
Well, I don't know.
Uh, my next subject I'd like to speak about, I'm very excited, um, we are working closely with Pennington County, Custer County and Fall River County this year. We're going to test our emergency alerting, which I've brought up in the past, like the wireless alerting, for instance. Um, uh, last year when Pennington did their, they began their annual test of all their emergency systems. And I asked if we could be involved in, as a co, um, test, uh, effort. And, um, so on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, at one thirty PM mountain time, we're going, Mead County specifically is going to test our wireless emergency alerting. And on that note, things like Amber Alerts are by default on Androids and iPhones, they are, um, enabled by default and built into the phone. But when it comes to local government tests, you have to enable it on iPhones and Androids. Which I have instructions on how to do that, which I'm gonna do my best to communicate that, I've talked to Tony and also JJ to see if we can post all these on Facebook and the Mead County website. And, um, Pennington County is driving the, the actual WSAV, uh, they're gonna have two different, um, uh, I think two days prior, on that Monday, they're gonna have, uh, on the news, uh, Alexa White, one of the emergency managers in Pennington County is gonna speak on it and, and mention Mead County, Fall River County and, uh, Custer County. Um, and also drive last, their feedback from last year, uh, um, there were several residences that didn't get the alert because they didn't have it enabled, so we're gonna, that's gonna be our focus, driving that. Uh, it's very, very simple to do, um, you do a keyword search in the settings and you, you just hit a button and it, it'll be enabled if you want to receive those alerts. Um, our other, um, alerting process is going to be what's called EAS or Emergency Alert Systems. Um, that's gonna be driven by the National Weather Service. Um, there's really not a lot of involvement from us to do anything, just to know and communicate that it's gonna happen. That's where the TV will flash the, the thing across the banner, across the bottom of the TV, I think, is how it works. And, um, that as well as the weather radio alert, which will all happen all at the same time, um, will also be driven by the National Weather Service. We, Mead County has a specific code that you have to tune your weather radio, if you have those at the house, um, too, which I have, and I will advertise that as well. Um, so, uh, yeah, we're gonna give it a shot and then moving forward every year, we're going to try to, hopefully we can get more counties involved. Um, some of them are at different levels of their capability. And we've had the capability, we just haven't tested it on a mass scale like this and, um, I think it's a, a great thing to do and I'm excited for it. Do you have any questions about it?
Make sure you share that with Reeu, and then she can share it on Facebook.
Uh, I'm gonna do everything I possibly can to share it, that's gonna be the big thing for the next couple of weeks. And I didn't want to have it posted until after this morning, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we were all on the same page and then, um, I'm gonna probably send it to Brandon Bennett, I, you know, anything I can do to pass the word out and make sure everybody has a chance to know that this exists for the next couple of weeks. And, um, so in, any other questions about emergency management? Okay, I'll move on to the veteran services. Uh, short month and I was out almost a week again with the flu. Kind of worried there for a little bit, had a really bad reaction to it, um.
Sorry about that, did you get the flu shot?
Uh, I did not get the flu shot, I did not, but I, um.
I haven't either.
I was almost hospitalized. My blood pressure was like one eighty, but anyway, that's, that's, uh, uh, something else, but anyway, um, so, uh, a hundred and twenty-four veterans, uh, twenty of them being new and a hundred and four of them being, uh, ones I had worked with at the past different levels of, uh, process, education, burial benefits, uh, disability claims, those kind of things. Think this is gonna be a busy, a, a very busy month so far, um, but just same old, same old.
Have any of your contacts, um, in other, in, in any VA offices disappeared?
No, no, not yet, I, I, I'm a little, you know, they're probably worried and they're probably not as confident, and they're probably not as confident as I am. Um, not being a federal employee, but, um, I personally feel like we're gonna be just fine and I think eventually overall, um, once the, the pain is out of the way, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna work out, I think it's gonna work out in the end. That's my personal opinion, not the county's, right?
Questions, comments? Like your new numbers were down compared to some months?
Could be, I think I'm past that already for this month.
Maybe that's why. I'll wait until. Hey, well, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Um, Ms. Brandrews, uh, I think you just have those two items, if you could be ready, we'll just bump you up on the agenda. Uh, let's go to item, uh, uh, Human Resources, which is item F on the agenda. Waiting so patiently, so we'll give you a reward.
Good morning, uh, Deborah Branser with Mead County Human Resources. Um, the monthly report for February was published. Nothing really new to bring up other than, um, the union has, uh, agreed and finalized the twenty-twenty-five collective bargaining agreements. Um, as the other comments stated, they will be, need to be signed today and sent back to the union today, so we will do that after the meeting. And then I do have one other contract sent by Wellmark. It's a consultant fee collection agreement, um, the dollars are already part of our, uh, premiums, however, it is a separate agreement from Wellmark. And, um, the chief deputy state's attorney did take a look at the agreement, said it was fine, so that one is also ready to be signed. We're getting closer to our new, uh, online software program working correctly, carrying our new employees' health benefits over to all of our vendors that we work with, the health providers. Uh, we just got notification this morning that Wellmark is now working fine. So, I think we got three left to go and we'll see how they do now that they know Wellmark is working. Yep, uh, everything else is just kind of basic. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Brandrews? Um, yeah, so we still have one correctional office position.
So I will be posting that today. Uh, we do have a part-time HR generalist, one starting, uh, tomorrow. Uh, she'll be part-time.
And we still have the, uh, three full-time highways operator positions.
Yes, so heavy equipment operator, class A positions are posted. But Troy has not come forward yet with any, um, applicants to interview, so he's just kind of taking his time and we move on him as soon as he's selected some applicants.
On those signatures, we need action to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can do action on the bargaining agreement, so we can't on the other one, uh, on the medical one? Cause it wasn't on the agenda, right? Right, so we'll have to have action to, for me to sign, to get bargaining. Uh, yeah, we don't have the medical.
It's part of all the other Wellmark documents, I just forgot to send it, to include it. I don't know that it.
So there wasn't any changes then?
There's, no, huh. And it's electronic, so I'm gonna need you to come to my. And it's electronic, so I'm gonna need you to come to my computer and do it, because they won't accept a paper copy.
That would be acceptable, Commissioner.
That is fine, that then. Um, but we'll need action on this bargaining agreement.
I'll make a motion to, uh, sign the collective bargaining agreements.
Second?
Motion second, uh, to sign the collective bargaining agreements. Any discussion on that motion? None, all of them in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Brandrewd.
Okay.
Uh, is, is Troy around?
Was here earlier.
All right, well, let's jump down to... Need him through most of that, so let's jump down to commission. I see we, uh, there was auditor wage on there that was probably more likely intended to go down into the auditor stuff. Take that off of this, but we'll handle item G, or excuse me, it's gonna be G, H, one through three. Uh, this, K was just, uh, Sturgis Arts Council. Uh, H two is a resolution on TIF admin fee. Yeah, I know, you worked on this, I just think, uh, Eric and Commissioner. Any comments?
Um, but it really, it's, it's on the paperwork side, I mean, just, just, just the amount of paperwork that has to be done in the, putting this all into our taxing system and things like that.
Well, and the thing of it is, unless I'm wrong, it's not something that is just done once. Every year the TIF is in a, is in effect, it impacts and it seems to take a great deal of time, and has been responsible in the past for more than one or two hiccups.
Yep, and we have overlapping TIFs that cause compounding problems.
Yes.
So...
Well, and Sturgis has got more TIFs than Sioux Falls, so when it all comes down to Mead County, it's...
Any questions, comments on this, Commissioner Mizorki, have you got anything?
We did work through it, and, and Doreen is right, that every, every year, the auditor has a lot of paperwork on the back end to split out those.
Thank you, Reece, for putting this together.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Uh, H... Yeah, and I've had questions, questions whether we just redid this burn ban. I thought Lawrence, maybe it's another county, but I was told that Lawrence, evidently not, uh, has a burn ban basically on, they do it the opposite way. Oh, same sign, motion carries. Go back to highway, switches, switches, item C on the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners, Troy Eastman, Highway Superintendent. First agenda item is our monthly report, uh, this is what our snow costs indicate right here on this, on the screen. If anybody has any questions, the report's posted online.
Been a pretty quiet year. Uh, it is March, and I shouldn't say anything, but...
Yeah, we haven't had any major problems, I guess, we've had just standard, you know, enough to go out and make the rounds on the roads, but nothing too, too crazy as far as amount of snow or conditions.
Always a good year when, when the crew is moving more gravel than snow. Yes, um, the flip side to that is we've had tremendous freeze, freeze thaw this year, and our asphalt roads are taking a beating. So, um, kind of on that note, I did ask Troy to...
I, you know, nice to get it all year, all year round.
Yep, spread it out is nice.
Yeah.
Any other questions on, on the snow report? On the traffic count?
I guess so. I mean, it's pretty much the same thing we put on here, different roads each time, but, um, if there's any questions, it's also online as well. If there's any certain roads we'd like to count, we can do that, too.
It does look like that end of the county, um, the ones that were recently collected, um, that, the counts seem like they're down compared to the last one?
By me, which is really low, ADT.